Derek, do we have...
Yeah.
They haven't called in yet?
Neither have I.
Okay. But they, they have the number?
Yeah.
Brad, Brad said he was probably gonna be calling in later.
Okay.
I told him earlier.
Alright, sounds good. Everybody ready? Alright, let's call the meeting to order. This is the Kershaw County Council meeting for November 12th, 2024. Welcome everybody out. Glad to see a great crowd here tonight. We have some really exciting things that are worthy to bring to the council's attention on the agenda. We've been called to order. We're gonna have an invocation at this point. We have Pastor Kenneth Carter here with us from St. Stephen United Methodist Church. He's gonna pray and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, please.
Me. It's no longer St. Stephen. You know how we move around? It's spring here.
Okay.
Father, we thank you again for this blessed day that you have given unto us. And as we come to the close of it, we are grateful that you have given us the gifts we need, the talents we need, to get through this day into this very point. We ask now, your presence be with us, your power be with this council. We pray, God, that decisions that will be made will be made for your glory. We pray, God, that your hands will remain upon this government. Oh, God, and that you will lead them as they lead us. We ask now these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We are ready for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Gentlemen, that brings us to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Please. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Jones.
Under new, under new business, I would like to make an amendment to delete B, 11B, because we have a, an executive session, which is on number 15. So I don't think it makes any sense to have that under 11B.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move it to a vote. First, let me check, who do we have online? Mr. Tucker's online.
Sammy Tucker. Yes, that's he.
Mr. Tucker, the motion's to delete item 11B under new business regarding airport contracts. How do you vote?
Mr. Conell.
Go ahead.
Um...
Need a second.
Oh, sorry. There was a second on the motion or not? Who's got the second?
I'll say.
We got Mr. Shoemake.
I'm gonna say who's second.
We got a second for Mr. Shoemake on the motion, seeing no further discussion.
Okay, I vote yes.
Mr. Tucker's yes. All those in person voting in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous in person, unanimous online, and the motion passes. That is deleted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... Any further discussion on the agenda, gentlemen? Seeing none, let's vote on the agenda as amended. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
It's unanimous, Ms. Hannah. Alright, next on the agenda is item number five. This one's near and dear to my heart. I'll go ahead and make a motion and seek a second before we discuss it. I make a motion that we approve and issue this proclamation recognizing the retirement of Jeannie Potter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemake. We've got a second. For discussion, before I read it, Mr. Potter, Ms. Potter has been a mentor in many of our lives. She set a great example. She held my hand for two years, and I know she held Brandon's hand as well at the State House, and she's been instrumental in the community. I think from the proclamation, you will see that her life of dedicated service has blessed many, and I'll go ahead and share the proclamation. Whereas, Kershaw County Council would like to congratulate Jeannie Potter for the many years served throughout Kershaw County in the state of South Carolina. Whereas, Jeannie Potter has served faithfully and professionally in many capacities throughout her career and brought upon, it's gonna be tough for me to get through this, and brought honor upon herself and her family. Whereas, true dedication and commitment is a great combination for demonstrating compassion and diligent service to so many elected officials, organizations, and communities. And whereas, Jeannie Potter has mastered years of performances and duties as she served in the following capacities. She served 14 years in the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department as Secretary to Sheriff Hector DeBruel. She served 20 years as a volunteer girls' basketball coach for the Kershaw County Recreation Department. She was a faithful volunteer for the Elgin Catfish Taunt Parade for many years under the direction of Elgin Mayor Don Watson Jr. She began her 35-year career with the South Carolina House of Representatives as Executive Secretary in the Ways and Means Committee, serving under three committee chairmen, William Bone, Henry Brown, and Robert Harrell Jr. In 2005, she began working as the Executive Assistant to the Speaker of the House for Speaker Robert Harrell Jr., and continuously served in that position for Speaker Jay Lucas and Speaker Merrell Smith until retirement in 2024. She served faithfully under the following speakers of the South Carolina House of Representatives, Robert Shaheen, David Wilkins, Robert Harrell Jr., Jay Lucas, Merrell Smith. And most importantly, she served as a loving and devoted wife to Deputy Sheriff Ernest Christian Potter III, who was killed in the line of duty in 1974. She maintained a life of service in spite of hardship and has also been a devoted and loving mother to her cherished son, Chris Potter IV. Whereas, we could never give an account for all the many great accomplishments served by Jeannie Potter, but do give thanks and gratitude for those that we do acknowledge. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kershaw County Council presents this recognition of all the dedication, commitment, sacrifices, and professionalism shown for a lifetime of achievement, presented this 12th day of November 2024. I'm gonna need a moment. Any other discussion?
While you're doing that, Ms. Potter, congratulations. I think when I first was interested in running for council and started talking to people about that idea, one of the first comments made to me multiple times was, have you called Ms. Potter yet? So you were one of my very first calls, and so because of your support, I decided, I kinda, your support was sort of the linchpin in making me decide to do this. So I'm here in part because of the public service that you've represented. So hopefully, I've made you and your family proud, because again, your family's a big reason I get to sit here today. So I just want to personally thank you and your whole family. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemake. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
If I may.
Mr. Jones, please.
If I may. Jeannie, I didn't see you sitting out there. How are you doing? You know, you're right. Y'all gave the ultimate sacrifice, a gold star family. And I remember that day. I remember when we first met, when you went to work with the Sheriff's Department, I was there with you, how you treated me and mentored me as we moved forward. Then I, you had this young man, well, he's younger than me, so I call him a young man. Chris Potter, I know you're so proud of what he's accomplished in Richmond County. We're very proud of you, Chris. We're very proud of your family. We love your mama. We love you. And I can't think of a better person or family to do this proclamation for. So thank you for all you've done, the service you've given us, and thank you for the ultimate sacrifice. Because you know, I'm, I have third generation law enforcement in my family, and we've been blessed that we haven't had a loss of life. I can only imagine. But I watched you grow up, Chris. I was there the day that Hector DeBruel gave you, Benny DeBruel gave you your dad's badge. Anyway, God bless you. We're very proud of this family, and I'm very proud to be a part of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
I'd just like to say, right after I started my term with the council, I remember going to the State House for the first time myself and Brent Thompson, and we visited you, and the first thing you said was that if there's anything I can do to help you, you let me know. That says a lot about who she is, what she's willing to do, and I thank you for that. I really do. I thank you for that, and I thank you for your family's sacrifice. Like Mr. Jones, I'm fifth generation law enforcement. My son just started in law enforcement, and we talked about that that day. He was in training. And so I thank you for all your commitment and sacrifice to Kershaw County and to the state of South Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kato. Any further discussion?
Yes, please. I don't, I don't have the deep connections that some of these gentlemen have, but I just want to say congratulations, and it's nice to have somebody in the room tonight that I think may have more sway than the governor. So with, with many years of experience and many friends made along the way, I'm sure. Congratulations and God bless.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brazel. Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
Yes, I know she probably can't hear me, but tell her, part of family, I said, thank you so very much for all of their sacrifice, and tell Ms. Potter I said congratulations, and it's well worth her tireless efforts that she has put in to serve this county and this magnificent state we live in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate those remarks. I'll say just a few things before we have you come up, Ms. Jeannie, and any of your family that you would like to come up as well for presentation. It takes a special person to serve under five speakers of the House of Representatives in South Carolina. I know we talk about how sweet she is, but she's tough, too. You have to be a tough individual to, to hold your own throughout the tenure of five speakers of the House of Representatives. And I see Mitch Dorman here, who is head of security for the House. You know, I think his service is the only one in this room that could rival hers as far as years and tenure, but she has done so much for Kershaw County. If you only knew how her influence has brought so many millions of dollars to Kershaw County because she gave an encouraging or positive word about a proposal or an idea or something that was needed locally. It's been one of the great honors of my life to serve as her representative at the State House and then here on County Council as well. And this, I can say this about Jeannie. If you're having a bad day, she'll encourage you that you'll do better next time. If you're having a great day, she'll encourage you to keep going. And it's that positive attitude that has been infectious to me and so many others, and I think is one of the things that we need in Kershaw County, to focus on the good things that we can do, recover from the bad ones. And I know she doesn't really like it that much that we're talking so much about her. She'd rather focus on, is it Victoria's 17th birthday? Is that right? Yeah, so she'd rather focus on that, but today is your day in Kershaw County anyway, and we want to recognize you. Would you please come up and join us? Come on up, Ms. Jeannie and any of her family that would like to join as well. Come on up, Ms. Jeannie, and any of her family that would like to join as well.
I can't hear you guys.
We're taking a picture. We'll be here just a second.
Okay.
Ms. Jeannie? If you'd like, I'd like to recognize you to share any remarks you'd like to share, please.
I only have a few things to say. Kershaw County is my home. I'm so proud when I leave Columbia and I hit that road and it says, Kershaw County. That's home. And these people that live in Kershaw County are like family to me, just like the House members are, because during one of the hardest times of my life, this county, the people in this county reached out and they surrounded me and my family with love and support, and I've never forgotten that. And through the years, working with the rec department, coaching girls' basketball, which was something that I loved in high school, I wanted to share that love of that sport, and I hope that I did with many of those girls that I coached. I worked with the Kershaw, with the Elgin Catfish stomping of the mayor there, and that was such an honor because it was bringing community together. When I worked at the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department for 14 years, I worked with wonderful people like Jimmy and other people, the sheriff. But you know, a lot of those people have gone, but the memory and the legacy that they left to other people who followed behind them will never die. When I went to work at the House of Representatives, Bob Shaheen, who's a dear friend of mine, was Speaker of the House at that period of time, and I went to work as a secretary in the Ways and Means Committee under the leadership of my great friend Billy Baum from Lancaster. And under that term, I also worked for the chairman of Henry Brown, and that was when David Wilkins from Greenville was Speaker of the House. And then when he, when Henry Brown went to Congress, I worked for Bobby Harrell from Charleston. And when Bobby Harrell was elected as Speaker of the House, I went to work with him in the Speaker's office, and what an honor, what an honor it was to work in the Speaker's office under such greats, me and this Bobby Harrell, Jay Lucas, and Merrell Smith. I've been very fortunate, and I've been very blessed to have the life that I've had. Even through sadness, there's been so many wonderful things. And I have so, my family here tonight, Cody, I'm glad you made it. I've worked with wonderful House members. Ben was one of them, Brandon, Cody, and my great friend Mitch Dorman. We fuss all the time, but we're the best of buddies. He's helped me through so much during my time down there. And then my wonderful family. I can't thank them enough for being here, for supporting me, and of course, the sheriff that's supporting all of us. And I want to thank y'all for this honor. I feel like that it's not deserved, but I'm so grateful for your consideration and for honoring me there tonight because it means more than you will ever know. Being in government, it's not an easy thing, as all of you know. It's not an easy thing. But you know, when you do something really right and it affects so many wonderful people, you've done your job. And that's what we're all supposed to do, is to give back to those who've done for us and give back to the community that we live in and the state that we are in and our nation. And I thank you for this honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jeannie. Thank you, Ms. Jeannie. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Jeannie, I feel compelled to say this. I just have to. I thank Hector De Bruil and Ms. Nancy De Bruil looking down on this night. They're so proud of you as well. He loved you so much. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Jeannie, thank you for being an example, and thank you for the delegation members coming, Representative Mitchell, Representative Newton. And Mitch, we appreciate y'all being here as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, this phone's going in and out. I don't know if y'all took the vote, but make sure you got me down for a yay vote and that I'm telling Ms. Potter that it's more than well-deserved and is overdue, because I heard her comments she made.
Okay.
She heard you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tucker. And just to confirm, Ms. Hannah, you have, okay, great, thank you. All right, gentlemen, that concludes proclamations. We're moving on to public comments, item number six. Did we take the vote, Ms. Hannah? I've been so emotionally overwhelmed in this moment. Do we take the vote? Let's go ahead and take the vote. You've already heard from Mr. Tucker. He's a yay. All those in person, raise your hands if you're in favor. It is unanimous for those who are voting. Thank you so much, Ms. Hannah. Now, gentlemen, we'll move on to public comments, item number six. Mr. DeBose, do we have anyone signed up?
Five speakers tonight.
Five speakers? Okay, and you've got the time. Just as a reminder, public comments, it's a time to hear from the public. It's not a Q and A. It's time to hear from the public about concerns or issues that you may have. And Mr. DeBose, if you would please call up the first individual.
Jonathan Smith. The topic is planning and zoning.
Hey, I'm here tonight, bought some property in Cassett, it's 1082 Sherwell Road. There's a setback that I'm trying to resolve. It's a 20-foot setback from the property line from where my building can start. As long as it's in the front of the house, it has to be 20-foot. If it's behind the house, it only has to be three-foot. But if I move my house all the way to the road, I can still put the building in the same spot at three-foot. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to resolve that 20-foot setback from the property line to the building. My property's only 170-foot wide. My building's 68-foot wide. So if I move the building 20-foot and then start the building, my building's in the middle of my property. But we're in the country, not around anybody. I don't see the big problem. I went from the property line, I put a 12-foot privacy fence from the property line over three-foot off of the property line already. So all I'm asking is, I want to put the house, I mean, the building another three-foot, which is six-foot off the property line is where I want to put the building. That's all I'm asking. But the 20-foot setback, we've already spent, I think, $100,000 cash on clearing the land. Hundreds of tons of dirt's been brought in. Everything's ready for pour. Cement's coming this week. Just got permits today. The building will be here in three weeks, and we're supposed to pour concrete Thursday. And now we've got this 20-foot setback, just trying to make it to six-foot from the property line is all I'm asking. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Smith. We have his contact information, Mr. DeBose.
No phone numbers on here.
If you want to leave your phone number.
Mr. Chairman, can you make sure, maybe the county magistrate give him a call?
Yeah, we'll get his contact information.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBose, who do we have next?
Ted Bronson, equine.
Mr. Bronson, please.
Good evening. I'll keep this short, and most people who know me would find that as a surprise. But basically, there's, it's twofold questions. One, starting off with the equine. Back in January of this year, I presented the plan or the idea or conception that the city and the county would start meeting jointly, maybe just once a month. In order to, as we're growing so fast and having so many different challenges, you know, in development and businesses, to, it doesn't seem to make much sense where the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. One of the things that I used to tell my political friends, that, you know, the right wing and the left wing are connected to the same bird. You know, few things are going to happen inside the county, be at the city or at the county level. That's not going to affect the other ones and vice versa. The original plan was possibly two members from the council, the county council, two members from the city council, one each from planning and zoning for both the city and the county. And then to have somebody from the equine industry come in because, in looking at the comprehensive plan and the things that have happened in the last year and how important the equine industry is to Kershaw County and the surrounding areas, that this would be a good thing to have. Mr. Jones, I'm sure has been working in the background, I would hope. Jeffrey Graham, who has moved up, I've charged him with doing the same thing. He, you know, came to me and said that he would work on that, so I would like to see some movement towards that. I think that would be important, particularly as we're getting the new planning and zoning ordinances that y'all are looking into. So that was one thing that I think we still need to move forward on if we're going to maintain Kershaw County as the equine area, at least in South Carolina, and probably in a three and four-state area. So that would be something that I think is needed and would benefit everybody. The other one is, I know that y'all encourage, you know, civic participation and people coming in, and this is where y'all can, you know, get a real handle on what I would consider the heartbeat of Kershaw County. We have three meetings tonight. We have the city at 5:30, we have the county here at 6:00, and we also have school board. What I found that the people that are concerned are going to be the people that show up. And even though I live in the county, I go to the city because, again, I'm connected to the same bird. So what I've proposed in the past, particularly if we can't get a committee together where all of these things are being talked about, the joint committee, then the city has where they have the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month. I think this would be a good time if the county stepped up and said, hey, guys, let's do the first and the third. It's either moving a week up or moving a week back. It's not that big of a deal. There's nothing already posted on the website unless, you know, there's something there. I went through the next six months. I saw no conflict unless maybe, I think April the first is the first Tuesday, and that's April Fool's, so y'all can have fun with that one. But, you know, as far as, if you want participation, make it easy for people to participate. And when there's a conflict with the city and even the school board, something that I think y'all ought to look at, particularly moving into the new year. So please take a look at that, think about alternating and working with your city companions over there, and let's keep, you know, more and better communication with the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Mr. DeBose, who do we have next?
Lynn Canto, equine.
Ms. Canto.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Chili Canto, and I live at 1265 Sanders Creek Road. And I actually have an equine facility, and we host horse shows and other horse events. And one of the most important things that I see is that the equestrian community is very diverse. It's not just thoroughbred race, flat racehorses, but it's jumping, show jumping, reining. My neighborhood has 30 farms, and in that neighborhood, we have a diverse community, but we all share one goal, and then that is to promote the equine industry. And I'm asking county council to make a point to incorporate an equine overlay with Kershaw County and communicate, like Ted said, with city council to do so. And I was at the city council meeting today, and one of the things I asked them to do was consider staggering meetings with city council, county council, and the school board so interesting people in the public can come and speak and listen to your good ideas and decisions that you're making. So I'm an equine promoter. I have my whole life done so, my husband as well. His father was a jockey. My mother was involved in the equine industry. My great-grandfather was involved in the equine industry and cattle business. So please consider the equine community and take thoughtful decision-making when it comes to promoting the equine industry in Kershaw County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canto. Mr. DeBose, who do we have?
Linda Cannet, sir. Again, equine.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Chairman Cornell.
Yes, ma'am, you have to kind of talk right up on it.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. You have to talk a little bit closer to it.
All right. Chairman Cornell, council members. Custer's Last Stand. I learned about it in junior and senior high school in the American history class. In 1876, Lieutenant Colonel George Armstrong Custer met his demise along with 274 men of the 7th Calvary Regiment when he made the fatal mistake of allowing his huge ego to underestimate his opponent, thinking he could ride up to Little Big Horn in the Montana Territory and straighten out a tribe of stupid Indians and their old chief Sitting Bull. Sitting Bull may have been old, but he was smart, already assembling other tribes in the area via the internet of the day, smoke signals. Custer had no idea of what was waiting for him and his men. We either learn from our history or we are destined to repeat it. Facing the challenges that lay ahead in our future, I choose to be Sitting Bull.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeBose, next speaker?
Next speaker is Tom Webb.
Mr. Webb.
Congratulations to everyone who kept his seat on council and to the new guy. I don't always agree with you, but you are my people, too. I'm a card-carrying libertarian, but I haven't paid dues in a while. Libertarian leadership has declared we're all citizens of the world and we don't need borders anymore. They have lost their minds. I guarantee they don't open their homes up to anybody just passing through, and they lock up at night. Libertarians can be too theoretical, and Republicans sometimes not theoretical enough. So I, being somewhat of a libertarian, tend to look at government with some skepticism. I look at what government has done and try to see what government will do next and next and next. And I think the American people are doing much the same with the Trump landslide. And it brings me around to a local issue. I think we're being overregulated as the litter ordinance. So we'll refer to it. We can't have litter on our property. It says, "Litter means all waste materials, including but not limited to disposable packages, containers, trash, garbage, or refuse." And then it goes down a little bit further to say what refuse is. It means combustible trash, paper, collapsed cardboard, and it includes bedding, it includes glassware and crockery and tin cans. You cannot, out in the boondocks, have tin cans on your property or glassware or flowerpots, according to this. But we are given the right to have tree branches, yard trimming, wood furniture, or bedding. We can have those things. That's what the ordinance says. We can have those things. Well, I think that government, our American government, is supposed to protect us from people who would take things from us that we naturally have out in the boondocks. I don't think that American government is supposed to give us our rights. It can't give us bedding on private property. That's something, it's an unalienable right. We're born with it. Some people say it comes from God. Are you acting like God a little bit to give us a right, a right to have bedding on our private property? I don't think it's a good idea at all. I think we can go back to the old ordinance law that McMaster signed. I have a copy of it. It's very much better. It doesn't have a $250 fine for the first offense. It gets around to it, illegal dumping up to 500 pounds, and then illegal dumping of more than 500 pounds, a $1,000 fine. It's a pretty good ordinance. We just don't really need this local ordinance that is confusing and gives me the right to have bedding on my property. So I protest. I really do protest. I think that if somebody had come along and told... I think that if somebody had come along and told Thomas Jefferson that he had a right to have bedding on his property and that government says so, he would have been outraged. Government doesn't have the right to give us rights. So in protest, I'm going to hand in some bedding. I don't know what you're going to do with it. I don't care what you do with it, but I have to make some sort of, some little play to get your attention that this ordinance is wrong in giving people the right to have something they already have. A caveman wouldn't have had anybody giving him right to have his bedding in a cave. All the way through Old Testament, New Testament, you didn't see anybody giving somebody a right to have bedding. But we're given that right now, it seems. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBeauz, anyone else signed up?
No other speakers.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeauz. That concludes public comments. Gentlemen, we move now to item number seven, public presentations placed on the agenda by Mr. Jones. Do we have a motion?
I so make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
For the presentation?
Yes.
And who would be presenting tonight?
I need to get a second first.
No, I'm just wondering what the motion is.
Okay, well, I'm making a motion that, I make the motion that we have the equine industry, members of the equine industry here, Ms. Cindy Prestige, Janice Coley, they're going to talk to us about the equine industry, West former arena and things like that.
We'll have a couple of speakers?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll give it a second.
Second by Mr. Brazel. Any further discussion? Mr. Jones?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm ready to get there.
No further discussion. Any discussion from those online? Mr. Tomlinson, I understand you're on now. Any further discussion?
I have no discussion. I'm looking forward to the presentation.
All right.
I'm just confused, but anyway, that's okay.
Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
No, sir, no discussion.
Hearing none, we call for a vote. Those in person, raise your hand if you're in favor. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Cindy Prestige. Will y'all come up a minute, please? You know, these ladies called me the other night, and I'm proud that we got the opportunity to try and do something to help them. They'll explain it to you, and I think you'll find it very interesting, and we'll move forward from there. But thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You guys pull the mic a little bit. Thank you.
I'm Janice Coley, and I'm here with Cindy Prestige. Cindy's our vice chair. I'm our treasurer for the South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation. Thank you for having us here. The South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization formed in 2007 to provide sustainable economic growth through the rich heritage and tradition of the state's equine industry. This is accomplished through the South Carolina Equine Park on Cleveland School Road in Camden, which creates an annual economic impact of over $4 million since opening in 2009. We continue to maintain, improve, and grow, and just celebrated our 15th anniversary. We were having our best year yet with 32 events booked for 2024. Then additional maintenance expenses and natural disasters occurred. We cannot operate without a water truck to maintain the showreings. Our water truck, as funny as this may sound, caught on fire, was not covered by insurance and had to be replaced. We were fortunate to find a used water truck for a great deal and remain open. Water runoff from heavy rain and storms damaged our roads, resulting in costly repairs. Then we had Hurricane Helene, which greatly diminished our fundraising events we had planned for that weekend to 30% of what we expected, and devastated areas where our exhibitors live. So our exhibitors could not get here, causing three of our biggest shows of the year in October to cancel. The loss of these three shows and the additional expenses has caused us to be in a $65,000 deficit. Due to events beyond our control, we are in a critical situation and doing our best to work our way through it. We are here today requesting a Kershaw County nonprofit emergency grant to cover this deficit to help with our operating expenses. We appreciate your support and look forward to continuing to host equestrian events at the South Carolina Equine Park, your Camden showgrounds. We want to keep Camden's rich history of horses and equined activity present in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have any discussion?
Well, I would like to say this again. Thank you so much for being here. And I tell you, we talk about how we support the equine industry. We are who you should come to if you have a shortfall due to things you could not control. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Counsel, I do have it under new business, so I want to give y'all a heads up. And what I'm going to do under new business is recommend it goes to the finance committee, that the request for $65,000 at that point in time, but I just want to make sure y'all understand. And Chairman Tucker knew about this earlier because he and I talked about it a couple of days ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
You do have a packet that we provided with more detailed information?
I think it was already included in the agenda packet. Was there additional information? Okay, yeah.
Is there a lot of details there, and if you need more, we'll have it provided?
Yes, ma'am. We would have that. Thank you. Mr. Brazel, I think you have the second. Any further discussion?
No, none. I've got the packet, and I'll review it. Thank you. Appreciate y'all being here.
For those in person, any further discussion? Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can you make sure that my package and branch gets put in our box, please?
Yes, sir, and you'll have it by email as well.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Mr. Tucker, will you make sure to set up, well, we'll talk about later, but I just want to make sure you can set up a meeting with the finance committee as soon as possible when we...
Yes, yes. I'll give you that when we either get out of your item or even my council briefing.
Thank you.
Any discussion, any discussion, Mr. Tomlinson?
I would just like to say I really appreciate the South Carolina Equine Park and equine community as a whole for Kershaw County and the economic impact it has every year, over $4 million annually, bringing a lot of people to the community. So I look forward to reviewing it and the finance committee coming up soon.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Seeing no further discussion, the matter is concluded. We don't need a vote on this one. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation tonight. Gentlemen, that takes us to the next item, number eight, approval of minutes. So I have a motion.
I move that we adopt the minutes.
Mrs. Schumake with the first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cato, any discussion? Seeing none in person, any discussion from those who are remote?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move it to a vote. All those in person in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes as well.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous. That moves us to item number nine. What constitutes a conflict of interest? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion.
All right, is there a second? Seeing none in person?
So that's how we're going to play this game tonight?
Is there a second from those who are remote?
Wow.
Hearing none, the matter does not have a second. That moves us to number 10, ordinances. If we could, could we get a summary on, let's get a motion first. Second reading regarding Fee and Lou regarding Project New Life. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cato, seconds. All right, it's on the table for discussion. Could we get a summary from staff as appropriate, please, Mr. Templer or Mr. Burgess?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you. Real quick, it's a pleasure to bring this project to you, Project New Life. This project represents a proposed investment of over $16 million, roughly 32 new jobs averaging a wage of $24 an hour, which roughly equates to between $48,000 and $50,000 a year per our average salary for the employees. The project is a metal fabrication and machine shop. It does laser cutting, forming, turret punching, machining, welding, robotic welding, powder coating, light assembly, and hardware. They can handle prototype in low volumes as well as running high-volume production items. Currently, they have requested a 6% filo, 20-year term, and at this point, we were able to request a grant from the Department of Commerce and receive that. That'll go for approval up there probably in the next two weeks. So that'll go toward the offsetting cost for the company, which looks to be up in operation if everything goes according to plan by second quarter of 2025.
Thank you very much for the summary. Any further discussion from council members or questions? None from those in person. Any remote questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the matter to a vote. Those in favor in person, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote? Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, unable to hear from Mr. Tucker, but from those who are voting, Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous in favor. The matter passes second reading. That takes us to item number 10B, first reading and title only regarding the TB Kawashima site. Mr. Burgess, I think it'd actually be useful if you gave us a quick summary. I know it's entitled only, but it'll be a foreign topic to some.
Sure, okay. Real quick, and hopefully I can nail this for you. The property that is being looked at is the TB Kawashima building. It was, believe it or not, I grew up in a textile mill area, so this doesn't look like the typical textile mill. However, TB Kawashima was involved in doing the interiors for automobiles, prefer, if I remember correctly, it was the Toyota industry. They did interiors, and at that facility, they actually did cut and dye of that material. So that qualifies it as a textile facility. Under the rehabilitation of, let's see, Textile Communities Revitalization Act, it gives the owner the ability to do basically what is a credit against income tax for that building. So when you say, for this council to say they recognize this as being a textile mill, it basically makes it eligible for the owners to come into that building and take an income tax credit for that building.
And am I correct in understanding that that relates to state income tax only?
Correct. In the past, you can do it, you have two ways. They can actually do it as an incentive and do SSRCs for it, but that's already being done through the filo. So in this case, with state in resolution and conversations and having done this in the past, that you just stated is for income tax purposes only.
And for this motion, under Title 1265, it wouldn't require any additional funds from the county. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from council members who are present?
There's no age requirement for the building?
No age requirement. It just has to be, to have been vacant for one year, no operations occurring in that building. This building was vacant prior to August, when we, and we being the Department of Commerce, a real attorney, myself toured the building. It was inactive at that time with no personnel or even machinery in operation.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions from those present? Seeing none, Mr. Tomlinson, you have any questions or discussion?
I do not.
Thank you, sir. Do we still have Mr. Tucker? Mr. Tucker, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in person, raise your right hand if you're in favor. It's unanimous in person. Ms. Hannah, Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes from Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
It's unanimous, Ms. Hannah.
Vote yes.
Thank you. The matter passes first reading. Gentlemen, that takes us to item number 11 under new business.
It's big results, sir.
Gentlemen, that takes us to item number 11 under new business. Mr. Jones already alluded to it. This is regarding the equine industry, placed on the agenda by Mr. Jones. Is there a motion?
I so move.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Mr. Cato. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. As I said earlier, I had spoke to the chairman of finance, Sammy Tucker, and told him that I had put it under new business. Well, one, put it under public presentation to give these folks the opportunity to come here and just talk about the equine, tell us what the situation was. That way, we all hear it in person and not send them directly to the finance committee where, you know, there's only three members of county council and there's no minutes taken or whatever. However, I'm requesting that this item be shifted to the finance committee. Mr. Tucker has informed me that he will try to get one set up as quick as possible. We do take your situation serious, and I also support finding the money to help you out with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any further discussion from those present?
When's our next regular meeting, Mr. Chairman?
December 10. And we do, we are looking at having a called meeting the week prior to Thanksgiving. Still working with y'all on the exact date, but we should have a meeting that week as well.
Right, I bring that up because as the only member of finance here in the room, I don't suspect we'd have a brief at the special called meeting since it would be limited in purpose, but I don't see any reason why we can't have a report back at that first December meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Schumake. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion from those present? Any discussion from those remote? Mr. Tomlinson?
No further discussion.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
No, I ditto on what Mr. Schumake said that we should be able to get it in and have a recommendation of that.
Okay, and as I understand the motion, it's to have the request for funding that was presented tonight under public presentation go to the finance committee for consideration.
And if I may add to it, to bring it back, what Ms. Schumake said, to bring it back at our next meeting.
December 10.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, as just a point of procedural order for this and future matters, I think under our rules, any council member can refer to finance, so I'm not sure we need a vote. I think Mr. Jones making the request is all that's needed, but defer to you guys.
If you wanted to have the muster of a vote, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just go ahead, and I respect what you're saying, and I think you're exactly right, but I just would like to have a vote on that.
No issue at all.
Yeah, we've already got a motion and a second on the table to send it. So all those in person in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes from Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
It's unanimous, Ms. Hannah. Thank you so much. Next item is number 12 on the agenda, council member briefings. Mr. Tomlinson, do you have any report?
I have nothing to report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Tucker, do you have anything to report?
Since I am remote, I'm going to pass for tonight. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Cato, do you have anything for tonight?
Just a couple brief things. First of all, with yesterday being Veterans Day, I just want to thank all the veterans that have served in our military throughout the years. And if you are a veteran and you're here tonight, if you would, please stand. We have any veterans here tonight? I know we've got a few, and I know we've got some on council, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Tomlinson. So thank you for your service.
Mr. Jones?
Secondly, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I want to wish the North Central Knights, they're playing volleyball tonight for the lower state, so if they win tonight, they go to the state championship, and I think they won the first set, so rooting them along. I don't remember or don't know where Lou golf in Camden stands, but I do know North Central's playing tonight, so cheering for them. But everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cato. Mr. Jones, do you have any report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you for lining me up to be last. I appreciate that.
Well, there's a couple more, but go ahead.
Well, close to being last. At least you start off me being first.
Go ahead.
As normal. Thank you. One, thank you guys very much for paying attention to the equine industry and taking that seriously. Let's move as fast as we can to get them some support and get them back up and running where they need to be. You know, we say we support something, but now we have the opportunity to show, to prove that we support it by coming to your aid when you're at a time of need like this. And you guys don't ask unless you need it. I mean, believe me, we take you serious on that. Also, I would hope, and I don't know what the administrator has in his briefing, but I hope that we're going to get an update on the stormwater drainage surveying that's going on, the pecan orchard, and some other things, because it's been a couple of weeks, and I'd just like to make sure we do get some kind of heads up on that. Now, I want to talk to my colleagues just one quick second here. I don't understand why in the devil you would not want to discuss a conflict of interest. I don't get it. I don't get it, and I'll tell you something else, too. It's obvious that y'all are all in sync with each other, so y'all... It's obvious that y'all are all in sync with each other, so y'all obviously were not gonna let me have the floor. You're gonna, if you think that's gonna censor what I'm gonna do on this county council, you're wrong. Y'all will not shut me up. I'm guaranteed to be here two years and two more months by the people of Kershaw County, and I'm gonna stand up for the people of Kershaw County, and I'm gonna stand up for things that I think are not being done right when it comes to a conflict of interest by members of this county council. And we can have this battle open session, we can have it out of session, I don't care. But bottom line is, we're accountable to the people, and I am I'm appalled. We're not a dictatorship, we're not a Gestapo, we are servants of the people. And why would you not want sunshine on something? All right, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schumake?
Not much. I was just looking at the date of our next meeting. You guys said it was December 10th, right? So I do believe we'll have the LG Catfish Stomp before then, so encourage everybody to go out and participate in the LG Catfish Stomp first Saturday in December, I believe it is, as it always is. So excited for that. Wanted to, again, just recognize Ms. Potter, as I said, she was, you know, she's been a big influence on me, and I think, you know, her words, I think, ring pretty loud, you know? There's a lot more that brings us together than divides us, and we live in a great county, so I'm just getting into with her very positive words, and thank again Ms. Potter for coming and reminding us that we live in a great place, and we have only, the only place we have to go is forward and up, and I'm really positive with the direction this county's heading in. So that's all I have.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Brazel, any report?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brazel. A few things I'll mention. The American Legion Veterans Day ceremony was uplifting, it was encouraging. You had JROTC there from multiple high schools. You had moving remarks and music honoring those who have served our country, and I'm just thankful that we've got that kind of sentiment in Kershaw County. In particular, Sergeant Major Patrick Payne, who's the most recent living Medal of Honor recipient, was recognized along with four other Medal of Honor recipients in Kershaw County who have passed away, including one of whom's daughter was there for hanging of the wreath on a symbolic cross for him. So that was just a really touching and moving event in Kershaw County. I'm grateful for that. Speaking of equine interests and industry, you've got the, I believe it's the 49th running of the Colonial Cup coming up just this Sunday, first time since COVID that it's coming back. Looking forward to having that, and I know there's several other equine-related events that are pushed out on social media and otherwise, so please look out for those. December 5th, 5th is the Elgin Christmas Tree Lighting, which is an inspiring event. And you'll see out at the Veterans River Park, the Tinsel Trail, you'll see that decoration going up in honor of Christmas, sponsored by several local nonprofit entities, businesses and individuals who want to honor that holiday season, so that will be coming up pretty soon. As we mentioned, gentlemen, we'll be looking at a called meeting and those interested in the public the week before Thanksgiving. The scheduled meeting was the day prior to Thanksgiving, and to avoid all of the hassle that would come with that and any of us getting in trouble on having to do a meeting beforehand, we're gonna have it the week before and recording dates with council member schedules. Before I talk about Ms. Potter in closing, I just wanted to mention, you saw a few of the legislative delegation members here tonight. You saw Mr. Newton, Mr. Mitchell, and several others, including Mr. Blackman, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Reese, and others send their regrets they were unable to attend tonight. They are so important to the work that occurs in Kershaw County. Over the last couple of years, it was over $53-plus million that came to Kershaw County from the state due to some of those gentlemen's efforts. And as one of our last acts that I was able to participate in as a delegation, I just wanted to share with you that the documents were recently signed, and the administrator has received some of those notices already, but there's gonna be over $100,000 coming to the county through a DNR-related fund for a boat ramp that has already been scheduled and is, I believe, being quoted out at the River Park. Another $50,000 for DNR space and programming as well, $30,000 towards a community feature and walking track in the Cassett area, which previously has not had much recreation attention at all, and then $20,000 from the state towards the town of Elgin to assist with additional costs for the community center that they have there. And so that's just one example of how the state delegation is crucial, and it's important to maintain those relationships to have access to the state budget in a more free way. Ms. Jeanne Potter, as you can tell, she just touches my heart. She's an inspiration, she's an example, and to sum her up in one word is just encouragement. I'm thankful for people like her in our community that continue to serve in spite of tough times, focus on the good times, and she's a great example of what I think, you know, we should be. I point to my, I point my children to Ms. Jeanne Potter often when she's speaking or doing something and say, hey, you really need to pay attention to what she's talking about. She's that type of example. That concludes my report. Mr. Templar, you have any briefing for us?
Just really quick, Mr. Jones had mentioned Pecan Orchard, so just give a quick update on that. We were anticipating the survey being done by a local surveyor, Robbie Lackey was out there doing the work for us, but because it's so detailed, and there were some hiccups with utility locates, so he's running behind, so he anticipates at this point to be done at the end of this month. But the engineering is running concurrently, so they are, we had a kickoff meeting for that project on, I want to say the 30th, 31st, I can't remember, but as it relates to the engineering and everything else going on there, so that is moving along. We're gonna continue to perform any maintenance we can out there to keep whatever issues come up. It's, the project is still gonna be maintained, the ditches are still gonna be, we've got a lot of work to do out there in the meantime, but we're not gonna, as I communicated to those folks in their group email, we're not gonna do anything major, but just anything to alleviate the issues out there now without compromising the project moving forward. So, yes, a lot moving.
If I may, I want to thank you for contacting Robbie Lackey, because we have some great surveys in this county, and you've got a good group there, and I appreciate that.
So, yes, thank you, and I really strive to go local as much as we can. We do have good surveyors around here, so, and we saved a lot of money by going local. So, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Templar. Any legal briefing?
No.
All right, gentlemen, that takes us to executive session. We have four items proposed for executive session. I'll identify them and then would seek a motion. These are all under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2 regarding receipt of legal advice related to A, grant funding and county-owned properties, B, airport-related contracts, so contractual matters, C, pending or threatened legal claims, and D, negotiations into real property purchase. Do I have a motion?
I move that we go into executive session.
We've got a motion from Mr. Schumake. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brazel. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. All those in person, if you vote in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous from those in person, Ms. Hannah. From those online, Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote on executive session?
I vote yes.
Yes from Mr. Tomlinson, thank you. From Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. From those, for those who are remote, staff will patch you in to the conference room. Ms. Hannah, it passes unanimously. We're in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make sure we act accordingly as quick as possible so we can get back out here.
We're not gonna go slow.
Okay. Hey, guys, online, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
We hear you clear now.
All right, we're back in chambers. We've got a quorum to seek a motion to exit executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to leave executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, bring it to a vote. Those in person, raise your hand, all in favor or present voting. And those online, Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes, Ms. Hannah. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. That's a yes. It's unanimous. We're out of executive session. Mr. Jones?
Can you give a little explanation of what we did is that session?
We talked.
We talked, and there's no vote expected right now. Okay, so the last thing on the agenda then would be to conclude and adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Mr. Kato, second?
Second.
Mr. Schumake, no discussion, right? Let's call for a vote, all in favor on adjournment. It's unanimous. Those who are remote, Mr. Tomlinson?
Vote on adjournment.
[laughing]
Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote? May have lost him. All right, Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes. I think I heard him, but he voted yes, too.
Okay, all right, well, I didn't hear it, so sorry. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. We are adjourned at passes. Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
Thank you.